Let me go ahead and call the meeting for order. This is a regular Commissioners Court meeting for County of Starr, Tuesday, May 26th. Mr. Recchese will be here for him, everyone being present. If anyone would please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments, I guess we didn't have any. So we'll go ahead, if it's okay with the court, and go to item 13. And this is a discussion and possible action. Authorizing county attorney to enter to premises leased with the new Nada City Consolidated School District for building at Fort Ringo.
You want me to speak to that real quick?
Sure, I don't know anything about it, but...
Victor's supposed to live in it. One of the things that we're doing with the renovations at Fort Ringo is we're trying to find tenants to take over the buildings that are planned not to be occupied. Last year, Capels, Special Agent Capels, had a need for office space. So we were looking for office space. We were helping him out with the Starr County Historical Commission, Revive Fort Ringo, and he saw this building. It's a real good building. It's called the Telegraph House. It was a house that had the first telephone here in River Grande City. Anyway, the building is in pretty decent shape. So in November of last year, Victor Canales says, "I think I can find some funds that we can move that office, the Special Crimes Unit, into Fort Ringo." And it's about seven to 10 people. And it's an administrative mission. That's all they're gonna do there, administration. So April this year, Victor contacted me and says, "I think I can get some funds to fix the building." And the way we want to do this is if anybody goes into Fort Ringo and takes over one of the buildings, you fix it up, and the school district will do a lease for $1 a year. You pay your electricity, you pay your cable bills, your water bill and all that. You fix it up, and where we come in is as long as you don't change the facade of the buildings, you can stay historical. Inside, you can do what you want, what you want. So Victor contacted me a month ago and says, "I'm ready to start." I said, "Well, hold on." Where you start, we need to make sure that the Commissioners Court give you okay and the funding for it. He said he had some forfeiture funds somewhere that he could use, up to $50,000, he said. And we took a construction guy, I forget his name, Aodensio, last time. I walked with him, we did an estimate. We did an estimate, and I said, "What are you gonna do? He's gonna put central air, he's gonna put bathrooms, put a new roof, of course, and little things comes up to about $50,000." And so the building's gonna stay there. And the way we're gonna work it is there's gonna be an area where tourists can still come into the building, take a look at it, without compromising the mission of Special Crime. Basically, that's what Victor wants to do. And this will be the model for other ones, because speaking with Coacha, we could have the Victims of Crime take one of the officer houses and so forth.
But we have it in the court on Victims of Crime?
Yes.
I don't see right that we spend county money in this school district here. There could be something done here somewhere else. We got that building where Commissioner Alvaro was dead, Commissioner signed with them, that can be restored or fixed up and get it used for that.
The bus building?
Yeah.
The one you're talking about?
Yeah.
They're using it right now.
Right, but there's other areas.
You didn't know nothing about it then?
No, I didn't know anything about it, no.
I only heard about it a long time ago.
The issue is this.
That you wanna spend $80,000.
No puede.
They don't want to say, "But you can't..." It is just county money.
Did it from which funds?
Well, see, certainly, I think it's a worthwhile project to revitalize the fort for historical reasons. However, you know, I have, I have an issue with the $50,000. It raises all kinds of flags for me. Again, this is the first time I hear about it. See, when it's over $50,000, you need to go out for bids. Are they trying to circumvent the bidding process? That's the first thing that comes to my mind when I see bids coming in right at 50 or right below 50. It raises all kinds of flags for me. Then the other thing, he says he's got money in his forfeiture funds. He might, but they're not budgeted for this. So I don't think he can use it. And then the other thing is, I've always had an issue with those forfeiture funds, that I believe some of those funds belong to General Fund, and this has nothing to do with you all, this is an internal thing that we have. I feel that a lot of those monies should be in General Fund, not at his discretion. And we've been going back and forth on that. I wish he would have been here so he could answer some of the questions.
He knew this item was gonna be in the agenda?
Well, yeah, he asked me to come and help him, and I don't...
He should have been here.
Well, the bottom line is this. The school district's mission is education. They cannot use money to fix the old buildings. The buildings, nobody wants to take over the buildings. The school district says, "They're ours, but we're not gonna fix it." The city says, "They're not ours, we're not gonna fix it." And then you guys like, "Well, we gotta use the money for General Fund." We have a real big problem with these buildings. Nobody wants to take over them. So what we're doing is this, I'm gonna speak with the school district and I'm gonna ask them to come up with a plan. What is the plan for the buildings that are not gonna be used anymore? There's about 10 historical buildings that are filled with paper, they're fire hazard, no one uses them. Everybody comes and does the tours, the buildings are falling apart, and says, "What are you gonna do with the building?" Nobody has an answer.
Let me have a turn. Don't we, there's funds for the historical places? I mean, apparently, there's some fund that has been used on...
The problem is, besides the politics, of course, the problem is, everybody says, "Well, Texas historical mission, US..." The problem is that the Revive Fort Ringo, we do not own the buildings. The school district is the one...
We understand that.
All the grants that we have looked into, say, 50/50. Where we get the 50? We don't have funds. The school district says, "We're not gonna put our 50 because we need it for the kids." So we're in a situation, and you all know, I have been in this for quite a while, we just need to, and I've said it in school board meeting, we need to recognize Fort Ringo as the jewel of Starr County. It belongs to all of us. It belongs to Jaime, it belongs to the people from Roma. It belongs to us. Yes, the school district has the title to it, but they don't have the money, they're not willing to put the money into it. I am very tired of trying to figure out, like, uno te dice que sí, lo otro te dice que no, y que posar la mejor, y para cuán... It's like, time is passing by. And those buildings are not regenerating like the coronavirus.
There are two national historic sites in the valley, two. One of them is right here, like she said, the other one is in Palo Alto Battlefield in the Bronx.
We just need to take ownership.
The State Historical Commission's been asking us, and now that I'm the Historical Commission President for the county, I don't know how to answer. They're saying, "Do you guys have a plan?" School district says, "Oh, we're focused on the kids." The city says, "It's not ours."
But we're gonna take tourists around, darle las vueltas y que nos talle.
Is that contacted the EDC? You guys have the EDC here in Rio?
No, we're trying to...
You know how much money the EDC has given us in the last four years that we've been working? $200.
I know, but the city does not recognize Fort Ringo as a historical site for the city. It's like, I...
And how much money do we get from that? How much money do we get? We get $0 from the city.
And they want us to go open it and talk to the tourists? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Volunteers are telling me... Yeah, no, I volunteers. How many volunteers? People are quitting, they're tired, I...
You know, I definitely think it's a worthwhile project, like I said, to revitalize Fort Ringo. You're right, it's a jewel that we have and it's not being used. You know, I would, I would like to be able to negotiate this with the school, because there are things that the county would like for the schools to, you know...
Give us credit.
Yeah.
Work with them.
Well, I think we're beyond, "Give me credit." I think we're beyond that. We just need to open our eyes and say some...
But I don't mean credit. Yeah, I'll give you, and I'll give you an example, and again, this is just me, not the court, just me. You know, we, we put a tower in the county park, because we thought the county park was ours.
Right.
Well, it was not. And now, they, they, they want the, either the tower back, or they want the money back. See, and, and this is causing a rift on Commissioner Science's budget.
We maintain the county park for as long as I remember.
Yeah, I know.
So that's the reason I say, you know, I'd like some time so we can discuss it with the school and, and see if we can meet somewhere in the...
We can have like a mini conference, like drinking parlor, bring everybody together and then hard it out. Hard drink.
Yeah. You know, again, that's what I would...
Because we're getting ready to celebrate 175 years of Starr County, Fort Ringo, River Grande City, for three years. So we got three years to...
To figure out all these things and come together. It's like, it's going to happen. Come to either, "We're all for it," or "We're gonna let it go."
I mean, you got people on the weekends looking at the fort, looking for tour, people to give them a tour. We don't have that. And we want to do a county tourism, where they can come to Fort Ringo one day, then we can take them to Roma to do the tequila thing that they're gonna open up. There's a lot of the petrified forest that we have in La Musica. People wanna come here, but we're not organized.
We're not coordinated.
Maybe we need to start changing our motto, I mean, Starr County, the valleys, outdoors, sportsmen. People wanna use their ATVs aquí, they wanna go hunting, they wanna do this. We're not capitalizing on stuff, the valley's the muere. The valley has no place to do fun stuff, we do. We just need to kind of organize it, come up, get our heads together.
Judge, may I?
Sure.
I think we took a detour somewhere along line on this agenda item. The issue is, for me, it's a practical one, Judge. Nowhere will I find a space this large, this inexpensive. Right now, the, it's, you're kind of used to have the SEU right now, they're using desks that are a third the size of this, they're stacked on top of each other. We have, whenever they bring in an individual to interview, everyone has to leave, cases have to be stopped working on, so that they can be interviewed. It just backs everything up as a practical matter. We've been bumming off of River Grande City PD, they gave us a space, and that's where we've been at. And so that's, the practical matter is that. That's why we were looking for space and rental space in town, is at a premium, quite frankly, with something that large. This would house the ability to safekeep weapons, to safekeep evidence, to meet and organize different raids. Right now, we're having to meet at the substation, or having to meet at the jail, we're having to basically leash off of everybody. This would give the SEU a stance to be able to stand on its own and have a place to stay at. As far as exposure to the county, there really is none. It would be a dollar a year, I believe, or a dollar a month, either way. It's not that, the idea is to refurbish it, for that matter. And I agree completely, and I'm taking the sidetrack, that, I just wanted to get my point as to why we're looking at this. As far as it being beneficial to everybody, it is beneficial to everybody. I understand what Commissioner Science is, is issue. I've been working on it for two years now. We set it on the agenda for the school board, the school board, you know, just didn't do it, didn't take it on. At different points, I've had different commitments from different people to go ahead and trend over to the county, the county has maintained it for many, many years. And so I agree that there needs to be some sort of cohesive working relationship with the school board. At this point, we don't have one, frankly. And I think this is a slow little bridge to start getting that...
That's good for the Special Crime Unit, right?
It, it's, yes. As a practical matter, that's what it's for. Technically, it'd have to be in my office, because the SEU is not an actual living entity, it's a conglomerate of different entities put together. So it would be my office that would be the one that would be leasing technically.
Okay, well, whatever the court wants, you know, I have it.
Judge, I'm for fixing the building, just where are you gonna get the money from?
The SEU this year has had chapter, you got it? No, no, what is it? Chapter 59 forfeiture this year, chapter 59 forfeiture. This is the first year that we've ever had forfeiture, that's where it would be coming from. It's not gonna cost the county itself any money, there's no money out of the budget, so the money, no tax money as far as it's concerned. This is all going from the city.
Those forfeiture funds, you must submit a budget.
Yes.
And it's not in the budget.
That's correct.
So we can't spend it.
No, at this point, no. Like I said, this is something that we're getting started, we need to have approval first, and then we start rolling all that. You're absolutely right, that we have never had a chapter 59 forfeiture budget. We have never had chapter 59 funds, that's the reason.
That would've been required.
No, 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 not if you don't have any. Chapter 59, if you don't have any funds, you don't have to do it, I mean, you get audited every year and you submit that.
You're looking at the new budget for this, and then October?
You're gonna start in October?
No, we're gonna submit something as we go along. The thing is that there's no point in having to have any budget if we don't have anything to spend on. And we've never had those funds before. These are some, this is something new that we've had, this is something that we've never had before.
But if you're planning on spending forfeiture funds...
Yes.
Without a budget?
No.
On the dosage?
No, once, once we get approved, and once we start moving, we'll submit a budget.
Are you gonna submit a budget until October?
Oh, no, we can submit a budget anytime, as far as the chapter 59 goes.
Well, Mr. Canales, why don't the city just buy a brand new building? They have the old, they don't have spaces here in the city?
As the saying goes, limosnero con garrote, Judge, Commissioner. As the saying goes, limosnero con garrote. They're letting us have it, I, you know, I can't say, "I want a bigger space," but you'll give me.
I have a problem spending county money.
And you're not gonna sign anything, Commissioner?
Their county money belonged to the county in a school building.
But it might be a school building, Commissioner, but let's look at it, the Fort Ringo thing, not the school thing, the Fort Ringo thing.
It's the same thing.
The historical...
We're dealing with tax fair life.
The historical aspect of the, of the issue.
Well, that's a tax fair building.
Yeah, but it belongs to all of us. It's a tax entity that owns that building. They should be responsible for that.
Well, we could have started 50 years ago and we'd have a beautiful one, but...
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, that...
And it's a political thing.
The school district is responsible for the profit.
I'm gonna go to...
And they should have been fixing those buildings a long time ago.
It all depends on who's on the board, like, I'll give you an example.
Well, they changed, they changed the order how many times? I don't see why they could never get...
I'm with you, la, 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 la. What happens? He loses the majority, now he's against it. I cannot change him, I cannot change his mind, obviously.
Who was that, I'm sorry? Who was that?
Batuia Hé.
But, Commissioner Canales, you can do your thing, and then what are we gonna do? And then push it into the court, and three votes will decide.
But that's kind of sort of what we're here, we don't wanna like go through the whole rigmarole and then basically get shut down at the very end. And Commissioner, the thing is that we got, I really firmly believe that, yes, what you want talking about is politics, it's fine, it's going to start coming. We gotta kind of like take a step back on this, this, this is really a political, this is, I don't believe that this is political. I believe this is a benefit to our community, first and foremost. You know, it's gonna benefit every single side in it.
I'm not saying it's political, I'm saying that the buildings belong to the school district.
That is political, Commissioner.
And they should take care of it. Why do the county be taking care of their building?
Okay, I can answer that. I asked that in one of the meetings, and they said that TEA is looking, the Texas Education Agency is looking at the way every school district is spending their money. Why would the school district spend money on a historical building and there's no students and there's nobody in there? So they cannot do that, their hands are tied.
Yeah, but no, 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 no. TEA knows that the buildings belong to the county school district. And I appreciate it, it's a law, but I don't know money, it's about a stop, but I don't think they can.
It's possible, but I don't think that they can.
My comments before you came in, Victor, were such, you know, one, suppose that it's around $50,000, and, you know...
$50,000 would be every year?
No, 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 no. To fix the building.
Except a brown estimate, running estimate.
See, and that always worries me when I hear $50,000, because that's a threshold for not going out for bids. You know, so, so that raises flags in my head all the time.
But, that, that, oh, the issue, issue, he just gave an estimate, he doesn't, he doesn't really contract here, no?
I don't control that, that's not...
I don't plan to go anywhere near 50, to be quite honest. The more realistic number that we've been looking at is about 25, between 25 and 30.
And whatever happens, you give group...
You're gonna waste it, it's too caro todo, but if you do it, you contract it.
And you give group perspective, but no good for Benjamin, what is it?
The biggest expense, the biggest expense is, we're looking at the biggest expense would be the air conditioning.
You know, I didn't, I didn't get through with what I was getting at. That's one of the issues. The other issue is forfeiture funds. As soon as we discussed this with Javi, that I believe some of those funds that are there are not forfeiture funds. They belong to General Fund. You know, until we get an audit of those monies, so in my mind, I'm at peace, that they don't belong to General Budget, I have an issue spending any money. So those are the, you know, my issues that I have. Again, this is not political, it's not anything. Then the other thing is that I would like to be able to negotiate with the school district, if we are gonna do it. You know, we've been negotiating the tower, the park, and, you know, we maintain it, you know, the tower...
We spend about $100,000 every year to maintain it.
Yeah.
We appreciate that.
You know, and if we can get the park, we can fix it up. You know, there's money that we can go get.
We can qualify for a grant if we get it.
I don't, I couldn't deal with the parts of what I have.
So I would like to do that, you know, I would like to fix our park. It's a beautiful park, it just needs landscaping, it needs maybe a tennis court, I don't know, a walking trail. There's a lot of things that we can do with it, but the school district won't negotiate with us. So I would like to some way, somehow, be able to discuss that also. And, you know, hopefully, we can, we can work it out and we can go forward.
And as San Velo moves out of there, what's gonna, it's right next to the park, I mean, that's for the cities to come in to see where you're gonna spend the park, or what are we gonna do with that area?
Yes, if he moves his railroad track.
No, I'm saying, as, as he starts downsizing his little gravel area...
What those properties, or he's telling you, where, are belong to, to the city, to the school district?
No.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just adding more, we're talking about the park, it's a real nice park, and we can expand it, it belongs to the school, you to the county, and then future thinking, San Velo's area is gonna move away.
Yeah, if we would donate that, make it into a park. See, and their, and their part is... And their part, and most of the... What I wanna do with the school district is I'm gonna sit down with them and I'm gonna ask them, "You need to tell me what is the future for all these buildings that are falling apart under your command, guys? Do you have a plan, yes or no? If you don't have a plan, then you need to either give it to the city, give it to the county or something. We cannot just do the, the salute, like, I don't know, yeah, or no. So I'm glad that we're doing this, and the 170, 175 anniversary is coming up, it's like a selfie post-deadline that we can kind of push ourselves to. We cannot kick this can down the road anymore. It's us.
It, it has to happen soon.
So the school district?
The school district. Ya dije la grilla.
They like the idea, but they wanna make sure they go...
They like the idea, but then we'll be, they'll re-approve it.
It, it becomes a political issue just the way it is today, Commissioner.
The what?
I was, it became a political issue. I was hoping that it would not become a political issue. I was hoping that this would be seen, but what it is, is good for the community in whole. Everybody benefits off of this. And they had the same philosophy, the same motivations that the Commissioners Court seems to have. They won't do anything until you all do something, and you're not gonna do anything until they do something.
But if you address, if you address the issue that the judge, that the judge has, I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure the judge will work with everybody. But you need to come forward...
Yeah.
With, with the right things, do things right.
I think, and one of the things of the whole, this was actually, this is actually two months behind, quite frankly. We got, like, like life got paused with the coronavirus. And I did not approach Judge, because quite frankly, he's had much more important things than this. I did not approach him with it to sit down and talk about it, because of the fact that that's what it was. At this point, it was just simply just to enter into a contract, to a lease agreement, nothing more. It was gonna, at the worst expense, it was gonna cost the county the dollar at that point. If we, if the court would not approve the budget for the 59, it gets stopped, it doesn't, nothing happens. And so that was the, that was the intent behind it. But I agree with Judge, and I don't have an issue sitting down discussing all those issues that he has. And I really do believe that the park issue is one of the bigger issues, that the bigger sticking point with the school district, and I don't understand it at this point, other than just pure, simple politics.
And what, what, what is, what's the strike part that they don't wanna roll over the park to the county?
Simply because they don't. I mean, that's the only thing I have, I haven't got...
You're getting $1,000 a month for the antenna?
They're 26, 24, million, yeah, porque no la planta, la renta yo la dio para el school district, no para el condado. Sí, pero, pero, acuerdate de los medias para atrás, como el chazo por...
You go with table it, Judge, so we can sit down and discuss the issue, and we can solve...
That's what I would recommend, let's table it until we can clarify some of these questions.
You're gonna like to make a motion to table item number 13 for later discussion and see any possibility we can agree with the school district?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we'll motion the second, the table, item 13, any further discussion?
Just Victor and Judge, I hope you work on it, we can see if it's a worthwhile project.
Yeah, and really, ours is not, not the real sticker, I think the one is the park.
The park?
The park is getting in the way of the Telegraph House.
Yeah, and it's, we spend, we spend a lot of money in the park every year.
Yeah.
And, and really, I don't mind, we could spend, in fact, we're right now going out for a grant for parks, to the tune of $2 million, that we could really make that park, just like the ones in the valley, really nice, but we cannot, because it's not ours, you know, we cannot spend anything.
Then you know what, we go through.
Yes, same situation. We wanna do things, but it's not ours, we don't own it, so I like that. Let me see what I can do.
County Cemetery, County Cemetery, River Grande City Cemetery. César City, porque no me da el sitio...
They said it's not the city's. And I heard that we got 10 acres, did we get 10 more acres, I heard?
Yes, we bought, we're building another cemetery.
We're gonna make a new one. With respect to the Red Penya.
Ah?
He was a...
Con Norma y...
Que ya was, con Norma y también.
Commissioner Penya, Commissioner's father, he, I think he did a tremendous job in that cemetery. When you go by a plot, he gives you a D to that plot, and it gets recorded. So that's 50 years from now.
In the records here in the county park, County Cemetery is...
I can, we don't know who's buried.
No, you just make, there's an area, I'm gonna bury you right there.
And I'm just building by now, like, thanks to the Sherman family donating five acres behind the neon school, where we're building one, and it's gonna be a free of charge for the people. No, no, we're not gonna sell, like, people that live in precinct 3 will be buried there No, no, we're not gonna sell, like, people that live in precinct three will be buried there at no, at no cost. What? I don't know, I don't have a.
Commissioner, I would suggest that you do some bylaws on that, requirements, because if I grew up and I lived in precinct three my entire life, at the age of fifty-five, I moved to San Antonio to live out my retirement, and I die, can I be buried there?
You don't live here, no?
That's, that's what I'm saying, we need to put that in the bylaws. You need to do some bylaws.
And we don't, we're there all there and simply. And if then the other family comes in, like, it will be fenced, all the five acres, you wanna see, visit them, just give them a holler, big cold bind, I mean, they're gonna go where? No. I mean, only, we live for the husband and wife, and then follows the next one, and then follows the, I already have, I got a leader that built, built me the plaque for the, for all the cemetery.
If you don't listen to what he's saying.
On channel, wait, what is the little channel four?
Thank you, Judge, let me see what I can do with the word. Thank you, Commissioner, thank you.
Thank you very much, and also, I represent Revive Fort Bringle and the Williams Club of Rio Grande City. We strongly support culture and historical significance of the buildings in all of San Antonio.
If Harlingen has a museum dedicated to Dr. Ramirez, and we don't have it here.
Wow.
Yeah. They have a real nice Dr. Ramirez exhibit, and we don't have it here.
We should, like, in October, November, we refurbished a building in Fort Bringle.
I'm gonna build one in my cemetery where I'm gonna be buried, and it's gonna be very beautiful with two flags and ours.
Yeah, we're gonna put in C and P.
And in October, Revive Fort Bringle and this is Roselli myself, the school district paid for material, no, we paid for the materials, they put in the manpower. And the hospital, one of the wings, we refurbished it, we furnished it, and we opened it up again. We invited school district to, and Roma too, to come. You were there for the, when the.
The room is about this big? In seven days, we brought it back to life. In the old days, just pictures of the beds where all the patients were at. It's real nice.
Very, very.
It's up very historic.
I don't think we, we got it right, I don't.
Well, we, we, that's when we had, what's the name of that?
We had the, Special Crime Unit was designating their logo, so we did two events at one time. But a lot of folks didn't go because, you know, we gotta start this political stuff back.
The political stuff and, you know, it's like, hey, this is not for, this is not a Batute, this is not a Dr. B, this, this is for Bringle.
But that you need to get straight up with them.
They were done by students, they get that going, tell them.
We're gonna bring them together on a table here, we're gonna get together, we're gonna lock the doors hasta que.
And when you say.
Yeah.
Judge.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm in favor of table it. I'm in favor, please, aye.
I guarantee you, I will, as the same lights paper.
Item number four, is this doesn't take action on the new vendors list? I mean.
Uh, yes. We've got the vendors list, I believe you've got a copy of it, we reviewed and we recommended you.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honitor, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries, item five is to the presentation of claims, Javi?
Again, those have been reviewed and we recommend that you.
Moved in second, discussion. Honitor, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries, item six, the burn ban expired, so I just put it on there. Honestly, I think maybe we should give everyone a break, whatever. So.
We'll get it tabled, Your Honor, on item number six for late, late June, early July?
Is that the motion?
Yes, sir, that's the motion.
Is there a second? Second, Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries, item eight is an action item, is the approval of temporary election worker for July fourteen?
Seven.
Number seven?
Not number seven, I'm sorry. Uh, to approve the amend notice for election on July fourteen.
What's the amendment up there?
Okay, the amendment is.
Election workers, clerks. Runners, people in runners. The clerk, he runner.
No, the, it has amendment.
See, I guess the, the.
But I have the clerks, okay.
No, it's the hours of operation, no, the, the primero, the amendment to the notice of election. Uh, is seven to seven to July fourteen. And then the, on election day, it'll be at the courthouse, the old city hall building, the Escobares Community Center, the Abel Gonzales, the Catholic Church Parish Hall in El Saos. The Roma Community Center, Salineno Community Center, El Zanizo, La Victoria, and La Rosita. On election day, we have to open them up.
All of them.
Yeah.
Have to be open all, all.
The, the absentee, you don't have to, but the election day.
Yes.
There it is.
Yes, everybody, please, get one. Okay, is there a motion to?
Move to approve. Second, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, what is item eight? To approve the temporary election workers for July fourteen, uh, we have, you have the list of the election workers and the runners. Oh, this, this is on, uh. No, estos son los que van a trabajar con John. To, to, the runners son los que llevan la máquina. That would imagine.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Take it.
Moved in second, discussion. Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries, item nine is to open a no interest bearing account for the emergency management care act coronavirus relief. I'm sure you all have heard a lot of commotion in Hidalgo County, que están peleándose por el dinero, the cities and the county.
It's all the big counties, isn't it?
Yeah, the, the over half a million in population cities and counties, they got a lump sum of about a hundred and twenty-seven dollars per capita, per each head.
But why, why was that, Judge?
That was.
No, no, no. By the Senate, the Congress and the whole. I don't see why they allowed that to.
Well, what, what Congress did, they, they allocated the half a million, the bigger cities, here's your money. The small ones, they gave them to the states, and the state gave them to us. Now, we got allocated fifty-five dollars ahead, y luego, como se hizo por poco, then they gave us only twenty percent. So all we're getting is three hundred and eighty-some thousand.
Three hundred and sixty-seven.
Okay.
Three hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
And, and the first disbursement, that's all we're getting.
And from there, you're gonna explain it with the city?
No, no. No, that, that's just the county, that's the only good thing is that we were not lumped with the city, the cities get their own, we get ours. But the thing is that, from that money, is to, to pay expenses that we have incurred on the coronavirus. And Hidalgo, they, since they're getting so much money, they're able to assist their people with utilities, with rent. Yeah. Whatever, because of the coronavirus. We don't have that luxury because we only got twenty percent. So, you know, it's like, like Enrique way I said, you know, they're treating you all as, as children, you know, here's. And see, then we see what you're gonna do with, then I'll give you the rest later. You know, and, and that was not the intent, the intent was for us to get the money. But anyhow, it is what it is and we gotta work with what we have. So this was three hundred and some thousand, you know, if you all had expenses, man hours, whatever. You know, we need to start getting all that information together to Mari, so that we can.
The platters?
Do we have a deadline by when we, we have to have the, what?
Yes, we must spend our money by December.
December, January.
Yeah, the, the, the whole one point some million dollars that we're gonna get. Uh, yeah, we must spend it by that, by that date.
Sure, we got a house, we'll just expand.
Yeah, and, and there's only certain things that qualify, so.
Do, do you have a list of that?
I can get you a list of everything that's, uh.
Can you provide it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and I'll email to yours, so you all have that.
You know, but, but we need to spend this three hundred and some thousand pronto, so we can request the remainder.
Right.
Cause I still would like the help, our people que no pueden con la renta, or the, la luz, la agua, you know, because they're out of work or whatever.
Tell me, you have a list today, or today?
Yeah. Yeah, or it have been copies, I have the copies.
Countywide, we've, I figured we spent maybe a hundred and fifty thousand.
Countywide?
Yeah. On those testing sites, the labs, the, you know, all this other stuff, all the equipment that we've ordered. So we, we spent a, a good chance, so I don't think it's gonna be a problem spending the three hundred and some thousand.
Your Honor, can we purchase, uh, los, esos que usan los quitados, we can ask the hospital for that?
No, the hospital's got another.
Ventilator.
The ventilator, see? But I know we have a issue, we had a problem with that.
Yeah, they, they.
So we can be ready for a second wave.
And, and you know, and, and I'm glad you bring it up, Commissioner, it does scare me because, you know, the, the way the people are out now. They think it's over. And it's not.
No.
If anything, it's, it's getting worse, you know, because there's more people that are having, so there's more of a chance of getting infected. See, nationwide, on the.
Nationwide, right.
So we need to have a list, we don't, we're not, we don't have a list of what we can.
We'll, we'll get that.
I'll get you that estimate, Commissioner, I'll get you that, what, what can be charged or used.
Just people that we had to dwell, get moved from their regular job to do the curbside servant, outdoor, totally, we can put into there, right?
Yes.
I.
Yeah, because those were people that were used for coronavirus.
Yeah.
They might come back and say, well, but they were still employed, you were still, they were still getting paid.
We had to change our operation because of coronavirus.
Yeah. Can I check, check all that out, you know, cause we, we wanna make sure that whatever we put in there is legitimate, cause we need to get the rest of the money as soon as.
That is correct, and then I also have, well, I'm gonna be, number ten and number eleven has to do with FEMA, which is, has different simulations as well, what, what, what we cannot charge or use for the Corona Care Act, we can maybe bill it to the FEMA. So, which is another grant that FEMA has that is part of the coronavirus, and that is given to us at seventy-five, twenty-five percent. So what, also what we cannot use for FEMA, that they will not reimburse, we can get that from the CARES Act. So I can use vote.
Two different chicken.
That is correct.
Okay, so I guess we can take in vote nine and ten, is to authorize us to open up two chicken accounts, one for the Corona Relief Care Act, and the other one for the emergency management FEMA account.
Motion to approve, Your Honor, item number nine and ten.
Second, Your Honor.
Moved in second, discussion. Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries, and eleven is also to approve the grant, the grant agreement with FEMA, and it's also for what just Mari said, whatever doesn't cover, between both FEMA and the CARE Act, we should be getting all our money back.
That is correct.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Take it.
Moved in second, discussion. Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries, item twelve is an action item, is to renew a contract, uh, to the county, state programs for total imaging.
That is correct, Judge, what it is, is just a renewal for our copy machine, we have to renew it every four years.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Take the motion.
Moved in second, Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries, item fourteen through.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three are budget amendments. Mr. Pennis, are you?
Uh, yes, sir, we agree with those, those are all in order, all within their department. I would mention that on item twenty, that is Road Bridge, the countywide.
I'll take it, Your Honor.
I'll take it, Your Honor.
Motion, moved in second to approve, discussion. Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries, item twenty-four is an action item, and this is a request from Commissioner, it's a budget correction.
Correct, this is budget correction, again, that has been reviewed. Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries, item, it is ten fifty-five, and pursuant to section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-four and five-five-one-point-oh-seven-two, we're going to executive session to discuss the order of salaries, and discuss the possible action to purchase land from Penya Amerito Trust. It is eleven twenty, and we're back in open session. The item we discussed was the order of salaries.
We're not gonna make a motion for the order of salaries, just pending on what we're discussing in executive session, to be reviewed based on our county order.
Say that, Your Honor.
Okay, moved in second, discussion. Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries, then the next thing was purchasing a property from Penya Amerito Trust for the El Royo Moreno project.
I don't think, I don't think, I don't think we do it, do we take action, do I?
Let's table it, Your Honor, until the next meeting, so we can know where the funds can come from. I need to check my budget, I don't, I don't have it, I'm gonna have to make you watch your money.
The table.
I second, Your Honor.
Second, by Commissioner Penya. Discussion. Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries, and is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, take it.
Moved in second, Honitor, please, aye.